We're gonna start with the Pledge of Allegiance and I'm gonna ask for us to stay standing for a second. Pledge of Allegiance. I just wanted to take a moment to recognize, you know, since our last meeting, we have one of our employees, longtime bus driver Kathy Malillo passed away, so I just wanted to take a moment to silence and thank her for her 20-plus years of service to the community and to the students at Denville. Thank you. Okay, we're gonna get started with our agenda here. Once again, thank you for joining us all. We're gonna get started with our special presentations. Dr. Cullis, are you up?
Well, I'm just gonna introduce. Our presentation tonight is very exciting. It's our Reflective Practice Protocol, which I know I've shared with the Instruction and Programming Committee step process, the alternative to traditional evaluation. But tonight, I'm going to have our highly qualified participants explain the process, really share some insight of how this process went for them and what it was like. And I just really want to commend you all for coming out. And really, this group of very talented teachers has stepped up because it's the first time that we're doing it, so they really had to jump in and be willing to try something new. Without us really knowing exactly what it's going to look like, these people were really willing to work. We had 41 of our staff members participate, which was more than I thought would participate that first year, since it really was unknown, but people were really willing to try it. And I really want to commend the team that put together the training and really the website that you're going to see here. And we have some of our team members here today, Jen Summer, Jen DeForte, Katie Ackerman, I don't think is here, Maureen Seaman, Sharon McBride, and Mary Beth Fridham is here as well. So I'd like to thank those people for really a year and a half of work. One, running the pilot for a year, and then spending a significant amount of time last spring and over the summer designing the website and the process, and then training our staff in the fall. So I'd like to have Jen, she needs to step up, share, I can hold this right there. Thank you, thank you. That's good. Is that up?
Thank you. Mr. Forte, Dr. Cullis, the Board of Education, teachers and community members. I am standing here today eager to tell you about the new undertaking that the Denville Township School District took on this year. However, before I do that, I'll just tell you a little bit about myself. My name is Jen Summer. Students call me Mrs. Summer. I am a proud Denville resident and have been for the last three and a half years. I also have three lovely daughters. I'm a teacher in this district and have been for the last 14 years. I taught basic skills, second grade, and I currently first grade at Lakeview School. In any profession, you are evaluated by your performance by your administrators. Being a teacher is no exception. In my 14 years, I've had many observations. After an observation, you wait in anticipation of your written observation report from your administrator. The first thought is, what will they say I need to improve on? Though the information is always informative, it isn't always what you expect or even what you imagined it was going to be. With this said, I can now take you back to last year. The district, under the guidance of Dr. Cullis, Mr. Forte, and Mrs. Rossi, shared a new piece of technology called the SWIV. The camera would record your teaching and follow you as you taught. You could then watch yourself and complete a self-reflection of what you saw. I was eager to participate in this initiative as I saw the benefit to watching myself teach and learning from what I had saw. After completing the process, I found it so impactful that myself and other teachers volunteered to meet professionally over the summer to take the reflection model to the next level. The New Jersey Department of Education approved an alternative evaluation method based upon teacher self-evaluation. This evaluation is called the Reflective Practice Protocol, which we later shortened to RPP. And it would be used as a replacement for one traditional unannounced or announced observation for tenured staff who received a highly effective evaluation in the 2017-2018 school year. For all untenured certified staff, the RPP would be used to supplement one summative evaluation score. Over the summer, the RPP team met several times to discuss the protocols and how we as a district would interpret the process. We came to realize there were many, many layers to this process. We had to understand each layer ourselves before we could explain them to our colleagues. As the team worked, we realized we needed a place for everyone who chose to participate could go to answer their questions and guide them along the way. The RPP website, which Mr. Forte will explain in a little bit, explains a bit more about the, through the process. The website lays out each component and highlights an important timeline for the process and a very important rubric from which everyone's written self-reflection would be based off of. The core RPP team broke up into groups by schools and presented this idea to our colleagues. First at the faculty meeting to gauge interest, and then a full presentation of what to expect at our October 8th in-service. After the in-service, over 40 teachers had committed to undertake the new initiative. As a presenter at Lakeview and a member of the RPP team, I took great responsibility to help my colleagues through the process throughout the year. I was open with everyone through the process about my struggles and encouraged my colleagues to call on us for help. We even had two optional meetings that Dr. Cullis offered to attend and answer our questions along the way. In my own RPP process, I decided in October to observe myself during math workshop. I picked a goal that aligned with the Danielson Model and addressed Domain 2C, class procedures. I saw that having math stations up and running smoothly was going to be a very important step if I was going to use this time to meet with small groups to target areas of instruction in my math groups. In the RPP process, I noticed areas of weakness such as I needed to meet with more groups more frequently and student engagement certain stations for the entire block of time. Also included in the reflection is one's strengths. I felt good to see my students were eager to come and meet with teacher time as they called it. I had also created small group instruction that was data-driven and utilized the Common Core to drive its instruction. When the time came to write up my reflection on the RPP process, I had a copy of the rubric in one hand and my video ready to go. But the process didn't happen overnight. The reflection process was months long, and so the written process required a great deal of time to prepare. There were four written components. The video reflection, where you need to note your strengths, weaknesses, and opportunities for growth in both your pre and post-video, as well as address your self-reflection goal. The second part was about the student self-reflection, where you use student feedback to drive and utilize your overarching goal. The assessment reflection was the third part, where you explain which assessment you chose and how it affected your RPP goal. In the fourth part, you used your unannounced observation as the reflection piece to note strengths and weaknesses of your lesson. In total, my written reflection was nine pages. I understand many of my fellow colleagues are of equal or greater length. I was eager to share my process with Dr. Cullis in our final evaluation meeting. I had learned so much through this process. It allowed me to focus on an area of instruction that I felt I needed to improve on. Every step of the process brought me to a larger goal of creating a successful learning environment in my classroom. I already have a new goal for next year. I want to focus more on small group instruction work, especially in my questioning. Already having a goal in mind has put me in a more constant state of reflection in my practice. This process is one that has the potential to make a huge impact on this district. Teachers who have been teaching for two years or are going to be teaching for 32 years all reflect on their teaching, but the RPP process allows you to really see yourself in action. It allows you to come up with a personal goal, not just one handed to you from an administrator, but one you feel passionate about. Thank you, Dr. Cullis, Mr. Forte, and the Board for your support in this process in allowing us to ask ourselves, not what do they say I need to improve on, but what do I feel I need to improve on? I am eager to continue on this RPP journey next year and hope new colleagues will join along in this powerful journey. Thank you all again.
I'm gonna talk about the website actually.
Yeah, if you don't mind, I'm just gonna sit behind here so this way I can navigate for you. So yes, my name is Jenka Forte. I'm the district math coach. I was part of this committee. Is this on? I'm too loud. I probably don't even need this. So another acronym, right? RPP. I mean, you've got, we've got so many acronyms in our lives, PDPs, IDPs, INRS, so many, so many things. It was really important to us to have a place for the teachers to go to because all of these programs, everything has so many details. And, you know, when all of these things are flying at us, we just need a place to go back. We hear it, we go to an in-service, we learn about it. But after you digest it a little and you have some questions, you just need a place to be able to go back and say, hey, what was that part again? What do I need to do there? So we just thought a website would be the easiest because we all need to go through the same process and just as a resource for what do these things look like. So this was the homepage here. We basically, we just gave them some, sorry. Okay, so at the top here, you'll see it says YRPP, which unless you have crazy vision, I'm not sure if you can see all that, but basically we talked about how professional development is really one of the biggest things that teachers really yearn for. They look for these things and they say that 30% of, districts lose 30% of their most effective teachers within a five-year period because their teachers yearn for feedback to improve their practice but find few avenues to do so. Dr. Cullis and I, two years ago now, went out to Kansas City, as you know. And one of the things that we learned the most about there was video reflection. And it was eye-opening, and some of you have heard me say this 100 times already, but it really struck me in the week's time that we were there. They made us videotape ourselves for one minute. You had to give your phone to a friend, trade phones and talk to each other, recording the conversation. Then after the conversation, you had to get your phone back and go sit in a corner and watch your video. Mortified, I mean mortified. We watched one minute of ourselves and it was cringe-worthy. But what we learned from it is that looking at ourselves is so different. It's what we put out to the world 24 hours a day and we don't think about it. We just do it. We keep putting that out there. And yet our teaching, we don't take a minute to go back and look at it. So that's really what the Reflective Practice Protocol does. It gives you that opportunity to just look at yourself in a way that we never got that opportunity because we're living it, you know, we're on the other side. So yeah, we kind of just went into over here, who is eligible. And again, with all the different categories that our teachers fall into, we wanted to make sure that we gave them this chart. There it is. And it basically broke it up into tenured and non-tenured and where they were, where they were rated in those years. And then it gave the requirements specifically outlined for them. This is what you can anticipate for your observation schedule. Even for our non-tenured, we encouraged them to do it because, just for good practice. You might get something out of this even if it doesn't get averaged into your evaluation score. Let's go back to here. The components of the RPP, Jen kind of outlined for you already. It was the video reflection, which is where we do a pre-video, a post-video, and maybe videos in between, just where you can monitor your progress and see how you're doing. The student voice reflection, that's another one where the students, you want their feedback as well because sometimes they can offer things that you hadn't realized, what works for them, what doesn't work. An assessment reflection is really putting together, okay, well, I did this video. I've looked at what I would like my goal to be. I've heard from my students and now I've given them, I've made some changes in my teaching. I assess them and I'm really curious to know, how did those changes affect how they performed? And then lastly, that's the observation. Again, they still have one unannounced and they do a reflection on that before they meet with their administrator. Areas of focus, this was possible areas. We just gave the teachers a list of some areas they might like to focus on. For instance, it could be workstations, it could be wait time, it could be any sort of instructional strategy they'd like to work on. And that was actually put together by a group of teachers at Lakeview. So if they were unsure of what they wanted to focus on, they had a list here of possible things that they could, that they could do. Okay. This right here is their Reflective Practice Conference, which is, once the whole procedure was, the process was completed, they would meet with Dr. Cullis to go over their findings, their nine pages of reflection. And that's their ultimate, that gets the, how they get their score based on this rubric. And this was actually started, this was the rubric that we had, so every teacher had it in hand. Told, this side over here would just tell you, okay, these are the pieces of it and who is to complete it. The first four are the reflections done by the teacher. And then obviously they can see what their aim is to score the four. And then lastly here on the main page is the RPP timeline. Again, I'm just a visual person, so I'm putting this together. I just need to see it. Map this out for me. What does it look like? So by the 15th, they had to commit. They had until February 27th to complete the process. And then unannounced observation up there on the top, could have happened anywhere in the process. Perhaps before they videotaped, perhaps after. It didn't necessarily have to happen in a specific order. And then from February 28th through April 18th, those are the post-conferences with Dr. Cullis. Good?
Thank you.
Okay, yes, there are more details. We can share the link if you'd like to. Study this in your spare time. Thank you so much.
Just want to acknowledge all of those that came out tonight and participated. We have done, we've done about 10 of the final conferences so far, and I have a lot more this week. It's very exciting. I have to tell you, it's far better than the evaluations that we normally do as far as the post-conference because it's just so interesting to spend, we spend at least an hour, sometimes a little more than an hour together, and I really get to put myself in there. She was a cure-all. And I consider actually going on in the classroom, so that is gonna work fun. So first, I acknowledge Valley View, and they aren't here tonight, but I just wanted to mention their names. So our participants were Christine Vatula, Janet Bichetta, Chris Bias, Jim Chikino, Jeff Egger, Tara Hauser, Marla Jaffe, Jamie Kovacs, Sharon McBride, Sue Schwartz, Denise Schwartz, and Maureen Seaman. For River Review, we do have some of our folks here, so when I call you, you guys would stand up and then I'm gonna ask you to come to the front row and picture with everyone. So for River Review, I have Adrian Bellini, Christine Morgan, Mary Beth Fridham, Ron Rossi, Rose Shine, Ori Smith, and Renee Stewart. Thanks for coming up. And Laura, Angela April, Jessica Shapiro, Jen Cusack, Amy Daly, Judy Daniels, Rebecca DiAngelo, Diane Hadarussa, Jennifer Benmore, Cheryl Gernia, Lindsay Harris, Laura Julick, Kathy Micus, Julie Nardone, Kathy Nygram, Cheryl Jerry, Conne Pillian, Janine Russo, Jen Summer, Christina Stan, Sarah Tokal, Katie Williams, and Hong Tran. So we give them a round of applause. Some guys who moved closer. Maybe more. Mr. Forte, come up. When she said nine, that's just, that's small because I had three of 40 days. But it was pretty amazing, amazing work. Real.
Excellent.
Thank you guys. Now, the Forte was four of you.
Thanks, everybody. Appreciate it. I'm well, thank you.
You guys can stay around. Got a really exciting agenda. Thank you very much. You didn't talk, you were voting on Harris. You're both right. Have a good night. Thank you very much, Dr. Cullis, for inviting me and having us here about it. I know I, I said it earlier, yeah, I mean, I'm just sort of doing it right, but I presented and it was awesome that we presented and there's been so much work put into that. So thank you for leading the charge there and certainly seeing that they found it beneficial.
I appreciate your support too because I'll tell you, it's definitely going to make a great impact. Just what's coming out of it, I just said, I said the number about an hour to an hour, two hours, something is always two hours. And just what I've learned in that time is invaluable. And what they learned, they said, you know, we give them feedback. It's good feedback. And they think about it, okay, I'm gonna incorporate that. But when they made it up, they said, hey, but every time they're doing planning lesson, it's on my mind. So it's like all year, they're making, that's really what it is, gonna be impactful change. Dr. Cullis, I don't know if you know now, but could you be able to tell us how many eligible teachers participated this year that you could see?
I mean, did you start with that?
Sure. I was, I, I've given the numbers, I went 41 people and, I can remember that, but it was nine people was reported. So, you know, so we probably have, it's not double, we probably have another third. But next year, we also have new people getting tenure and are eligible. So we have this year, two people participate that are non-tenured. But for the most part, they're all tenured. And I think as people get tenure, they'll want to do it. I have a lot of the younger staff, it's a lot of non, we have a lot of non-tenured right now. And we also have a lot of people on leave, so they were not eligible. And if they weren't here last year, the full year, they were not eligible. So you have to be here, you can't be on leave the year before. You have to be highly effective and get your tenure. So I would say we probably have about seven that weren't eligible and 41 that participated.
Any other questions? You? Give a little presentation.
Just a, it's super tight conference, but one conference is something up there.
Sounds good.
So. My eyes are so bad, I can't even see it. It's all way weird from up here. But our, our comp group has been updated. It now includes 12 districts. Three districts are not well-known already due to the fact that their enrollment has substantially decreased. And so we have 12, we have 12 districts in our comp group. Should we go through a few things? I think they're pretty important. If you recall, when I first started this, our instructional time was actually the bottom. And now, Valley View is number one out of 35 schools in our comp group that in instructional time, in River View and Valley, and River View and Lakeview are tied to number two. That's pretty cool. Our summative rank in River View, we've already talked about this, River View and Lakeview is two and three, which puts us in the top 1.5%. The summative rank for Valley was pretty much right in the middle of the group at seven. The percentage of students in algebra and geometry, so this is all the students in algebra and geometry in eighth grade divided among, divided by the total population of the school. So out of, out of that group, we were the third. So we had the third highest percentage of kids taking algebra and geometry in the comp group. Then I have some things like CST members per pupil, teacher per pupil, budget cost per pupil. You can see we're like right in the middle of those three, six, six, six. Median income, nine. So we're, we're in the bottom, we're in the bottom third of the median income. And then we're also in the bottom of percentage of stu, of adults with a four-year college degree. But at the same time, we're number two in ELA passing rate. I'm gonna go to another chart and then you'll explain some of that. Chronicity absent, five. Math passing is eight. ELA growth was three and ELA and math growth was six. The last one, teacher retention is a little bit deceiving. I put it on there because it was one of the fields and I didn't want to just leave it off. It's really deceiving because they do include retirements and paternity leaves. And if you recall, this is from two years ago, we had a lot of retirements and paternity leaves. So I don't know, I don't, the reason why I can say I'm not worried or concerned about it is we didn't lose any teachers for lateral jobs. You know, if a teacher left to become a vice principal or something, that's, that's not a lateral job. If they left to become for a lateral job, we didn't lose anybody for that. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't worry about it too much. You can see where our math scores are in that comp group, in that, in that bar graph, the bar chart there. And then our ELA scores again, you can see that. But the one I really want to focus on is the next page. If you could switch that page, would you? Next page. So this, this is a correlation. Can you blow that up a little bit? This is just a correlation of ELA scores and percentage of adults with a college degree. So that red star here is what's up. So you can see we're second in ELA scores, but we're actually third from the bottom in percentage, actually second from the bottom in, in stu, parents or adults over the age of 25 with a college degree. And that line shows that there is a correlation between the two statistics. It's not, it's not a super strong correlation, but there is a correlation.
What's the R, do you know what the R square value is?
No, I haven't, I haven't.
That'd be interesting though. I'll send you up your budget.
As a matter of fact, you can go and do it right now. So that's our, that's the data. We're gonna have some of this stuff in our, in our board presentation for MARN, for the budget. And we'll have some of this again for our tax, for our budget presentation to the public on the 29th. So I just wanted to share a little bit with you so you guys had that. And I have a couple more things to talk about, but I'm gonna move back to your old library. All right, next. Update on some goals. So, so my miracles, this is an update of my miracles. Professional development on leadership coaching and turnkey to other members of the administrative team. We all did a leadership training with Leadership Solutions on July 31st, 2018. Coaching sessions were set up with the team. A one-hour follow-up session was also taking place on February 19th with just me. And so that goal was completed. Conducted 250 walk-through evaluations. As of April 1st, 257 walk-through evaluations were done by me. And we, as a team, conducted about 1,100. And then also revised, updated, presented a new comparison group. That's the one I just did for you right now. The entire comparison group is, is, is in the folder if you guys look at it. So it's, it's a probably something like 30 columns wide. So it's got a lot of, it's got a lot of data in different areas to look at. And we can talk more about that if anybody has any questions. The other one that I have that's still open is the grant writing. So I did, I did write a couple of grants. We're waiting back. We also have, we also did receive sub-funds already. I just spent with the Rotary, asked them for some help with our, with our free lunches and waiting to hear back from them. And then we also have a total loan, how much money was going into the district already. So thank you for moving along. Before the fifth, once again, stay open for a while, maybe into the summer, the other ones are complete. And our district goals are moving along as well. I didn't, I didn't update that because it was not as work since the fact that we pretty much accomplished what we were doing already last time. Do anybody have any questions about any of that?
I have a quick question. $45,000 for Valley View Field Baseball Field.
That's a grant, yeah.
Okay. So, oh, it's not something like they're gonna rent the baseball field?
No, I wrote a grant to see if I could get some funding for that funding.
Okay, great. That's awesome. And mathnasium, is that, aren't they closed in Denville or is this a different?
It's right, it's right by, isn't it where the old Heritage Row is?
Yeah.
Oh.
Right, yeah.
It's kind of nearby. I'm thinking of the location near the, what is that, DME Center, Lakeland Center.
Oh.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Somebody have a question?
Just, yeah, on the, just to, on your, with the comp group, the five categories comparison. Can you just, when you, you highlight the five categories?
So I didn't do instructional time? Yeah, I, I actually, you're fine, you just, yeah.
Yeah.
There's, there's like 10 new, kind of.
Okay.
See, where is that, you try those?
It's in the reports.
Oh, in the reports. Oh, your reports, I got it.
So I have two other, a couple other things to talk about. I, like. So I have two other, a couple other things to talk. I, I did one break up that on April twenty-ninth, I have updates in calendar for eighteen nineteen. That would include closing school on June twenty, twentieth and twenty-first. And then making June eighteenth and nineteenth a half day. We keep the four-day weekend for a whole day. And that obviously if you go snow or any other issues or something like that, that would be my plan. And if there was an issue that happened, we'd have to add it back. But at least we'll tell people in advance that that's, that's what our, that's what our plan is. Anybody have questions or anything like that?
Could you change, does it clarify agency, the value of graduation set that will change regardless of how much changes?
That will not change. That's why we're, that's why we're doing those days. Because if there was, if we didn't use one more day, we were going to take another weekend off Friday somewhere. So remember last year we started the Persons of the Year Award? This year, the Persons of the Year Award survey has been posted already online. It's on our, it's on our home webpage. It's been put on social media. It will be coming out in the TAP and into the Citizen. And it's in the Friday folder. Hopefully Don will be on the committee again, like that, Kevin?
My generation, absolutely.
So we'll, we'll hopefully have a committee meeting sometime in early May and have the person, have the presentation here at the second board meeting then. Remember tomorrow night, we have our board presentation of the budget to the council. That's April ninth, eight P M. And I know it will be starting before that but we're not going on the lane. So if you're planning on going and you want to see us, come at eight. And just a reminder that we are having committees tomorrow, five P M for finance and five-thirty P M for, for IMP and the River View Trailers. That's it.
As just as a reminder, Persons of the Year, one was student, one was Denville resident, and then the last one was a teacher.
Got it, stat.
Stat. Dr. Collins, any assistance, super, any comments?
A couple of items coming up. First, River View was selected to present at the Social-Motional Learning Conference at Rutgers. Of all the work they've done in their building, it will be presenting on May twenty-third. Meetings for transition, middle school meetings. One is April thirtieth, that's the fifth grade parent placement meeting. So we'll be answering the questions about how courses are selected and how placement occurs. May twenty-ninth, fifth grade students will go to Valley View from both schools. They go for a visit for a two-hour visit. And then that night, the parents are invited to come back at seven-thirty. And Mr. Harmon and Mr. Itozka will answer questions for the parents. And the eighth grade parent meeting is also, uh, May twenty-ninth, that's from six, at six o'clock in Valley View. So May twenty-ninth for fifth grade and eighth grade parents, planned to be at Valley View. Motivational speaker Russell Lehman will present Triumph Overcoming Odds on April sixteenth at seven o'clock at River View. Kindergarten updates, we've had some changes but the number's about the same, like one-seventy-one because we have had three unregistered. So for various reasons, but we have twenty-one flex, eighty-four Lakeview, sixty-six River View. So anyone out there who's not registered for kindergarten, please go to our website at mill.org and make sure you're registered for two thousand nineteen twenty kindergarten. And finally, my update on the goal was just one of the, was the R V P which you saw tonight. And to give you a correct and clear answer, there were forty-one out of eighty-seven eligible teachers participated, which was forty-seven percent. And our goal was twenty-five. So I was pleasantly surprised and pleased with the outcome all around. This concludes the assistance. You're welcome.
Thank you. Dr. Collins, Dr. Collins, got a few questions. Just can you remind me on the timeline of, I know, I know we'll have to share a lot.
Our goal is going to be able to May to make a decision on the numbers because we really have to talk then of what some of our goals are. Because we're sitting currently at twenty-two per class at River View as of right now. And we're sitting at twenty, with four sections, we're sitting at twenty-one at Lakeview. And we still have twenty-one kids we haven't placed anywhere. So if they all go to Lakeview, then we stay about, hoping that they did not get any more students. But we're going with the fact that we're going to be fully full when the horseman starts. And our suggested number is twenty-three. So whether or not we want to stay at that number below or do we prefer going to the ninth section, or do we prefer to lower the class sizes, or do we prefer to have bigger classes? And that's kind of where we're at. And I'm hoping the numbers, they are slowing but trying to get a clear picture. Because the ninth section may be no option. There may not be an option. If we get, you know, what, can I say ten more really? Then there's no options. We have to go to the ninth section. And then we just, you know, really have to decide is the order, do we want to keep those class sizes smaller or do they want to forego the ninth section and go twenty-four, twenty-five kindergarten classes? I'm trying to, I'm working with the twenty-three number right now. And then we're just about full.
If there's fear of seniors pass, do you think this will get more than ten at this time frame?
I think so, yeah. I think it's early and we get a lot of summer movements. And that, you know, it, it's, it's difficult. And that's why I'm trying to wait as long as possible. Because if they all move in the River View section, then we'll put the fourth section at River View and then I'll be able to split the, the flex some people. And put eight of those students in River View and the other in Lakeview. And then it will be in a class size of twenty, which probably, I don't know, professionally I would prefer. I think that's a better number. But if they all move into the Lakeview side, then I'd be invited to have just a River View classes. Not quite sure. So I'm hoping, might just pull off this April May and see if we get any, you know, once the rolling, or we can do it in two months. We do need to make a decision because we will be at the higher if we, if we go to the ninth section. And we're anticipating that this may be the case in a week. But literally, we've been talking about what will that look like? Space, will it look like? And just our long-term conversation that we're looking to be, really back to the forefront. Is that even, I mean, we have some possible moving in based on the complex of the new construction. Without that, we still are looking at larger numbers, you know, knowing that last year, I can't be sure, but last year we had fifty percent were the oldest. This year we have fifty percent were the oldest. It's looking like we're having a number of families. If that's the case, we can only sustain for two more years with the space we have. Because if that kindergarten class that goes up first, I think there's going to be a fourth section at River View. Which means that in first grade, there's going to be a fourth section. And if they get another fourth section at kindergarten, I've now taken the music room. And then there's no more classrooms. I can only take music and art room and then science lab. That's all that's left. There's nowhere else to put, certainly heck, but a general classroom in the gym, you know, there's no class. So two years is really, is what I'm looking at. And, you know, I wish that weren't the scenario but you really need to have that conversation. Because if we end up deciding that it's, we're going down a building route, that's going to take time. And then what do we do with those two years of building? And we have ideas. We're talking about it on a daily basis, Mr. Porte and Skrazny and I. We have constantly updated them daily because I'm like, oh, a couple more kids. Just because I'm thinking, what's this impact next year? What's the impact? So our eyes are on the ball but we have some ideas, some wishes that we would like to happen however, you know, it is a special we need to be having so that we don't get ourselves in this trouble.
Thank you. So is nine rooms, it will be half?
Yes. And that's.
Kindergarten rooms are appropriate with bathrooms and set up correctly?
There, the one at River View would have to get a waiver because the bathroom's across the hall. But they would stay in the kindergarten hallway. It would be what is now a fifth grade classroom. Well, we will be moving, we can move that upstairs. And the classroom that we'll be taking is now going to turn to co-teach. So actually you have two teachers going into one classroom so we gain one that space. Instead of it as a resource room for that, for that space. But.
We have eight sections right now?
We currently have eight sections. We have five and then a self-attended kindergarten as well. So we technically have nine but one's just a small setting. So general education, eight sections. And that was, when I first thought here, we had six in fourth and fifth, oh, sorry, six and we had ten in fourth and fifth six years ago. And then it went down and all River View made its way down to three sections. And now I'm going back the other way. And for Lakeview needs to be a little more because we instead had five and, you know, emptying at six. I'm not sure what we'll post.
So nine sections at twenty-three per section?
It probably will not. It probably be nineteen-twenty.
You're saying if that was the max?
Yes.
If you say twenty-three in general, is it, is it?
Yes.
Not a, not a hot, not an absolute high but a high actually we want to go, let's say? That puts us at two oh seven?
I don't think we'll go that high.
Yeah, not.
Not, no.
It doesn't seem good. And by the way, that's an ideal situation where you're taking them and dividing by not being right.
Correct. And that's why I'm playing, I mean, that's the great thing about it so as we do have a little bit of room. But again, I also want to tell families and get everybody settled for summer because they need to know when they're going, how to get room and so forth. But it's just, I certainly am not saying, I don't want to be this guy's fault, but I want to keep this in mind. Because whatever decision we make takes time. And we'll have to put those things in place.
I just have a couple things to say to everybody who are going forward. You might have some members of the public complaining. Especially people who live in the flex on our hard-toll school, we don't tip. It's going to be later than we've ever done before when we're going to form that. We're going to, we're going to do that unless the board would like to move forward with hiring a teacher. But at this point, I just felt like, let's see where we're at. We don't really know. We don't, I mean, we think we know but we don't really know how many more people are going to, they won't. So, so please just beware if you hear that, if you hear complaints about that. You always saw them over to me or Dr. Collins. But yeah, it's, it's a situation we're in. It's probably, at least there will be things going to be happening on the road for the next few years. And I know that there is some traction on some of the projects in the town. So, so that, that situation right now, we're talking about growth without being additional out. So another thing I did was, starting then all the way through the summer, I put out a discussion item. You know, the, the, the size and how much we have to have and what we'll be doing because what we don't want to do is not be ready. Because I do not want people in trailers here. I mean, you know, I just do not want any trailers. It's going to be really hard, you know, to, to try to deal with having somebody in the trailer. We'll come up with other options but. Like we said, it's really important. A couple things you should just remember. We could, we could probably do two years. On the third year, if we should continue to grow, we'd go in from our typical eight sections to nine sections. If that happens on the third year, we don't have any more space to put kids. So it's just something we need to keep on the forefront. It should be on the committee members, it should be on the committee meeting agendas, it should be on our agendas here.
Could I ask a question just for my clarification? See, we currently have staff in eight classrooms over there currently. And the decision to go to nine would have to be when? Because our next meeting, our next regular session will be the end of this month. And then in May, because of the holiday, we'll be having, our next meeting will be twentieth or one earlier. So are we looking to make a decision by May twentieth? Is that what I'm hearing?
May, I mean, I don't know. It's hard. Normally we would have told everybody.
Let me rephrase the question then. Would we ever be in a situation where we would go into the summer still, I'm looking at the sun?
I mean, we'll know before the end of the school year.
Okay.
We'll make a decision before the end of the school year. And we do have our board policy. And remember, our board policy is not, it's called guided by the term. You have to have it. The state law does say, oh, you can only have twenty-five kids in a classroom in a kindergarten class. But you can go over if you put an A in there. So we're really not interested in doing that. We really like to keep the class sizes, you know, under, under what the limit is in our board policy. If we can make that decision, then I agree we will. But, I mean, we might make the decision internally, tell everybody, like, look, this is what we're doing. Because our board policy is a twenty-three and now we have twenty-five kids. We're going to hire a teacher. The teacher may not be on the agenda until June or even early July. We might, we might be forced to make the decision before that.
I would ask that in, if it's not on the IMP agenda tomorrow, if you guys can discuss it in I P, just to make sure there's some, I've got my own personal opinion. But just so the IMP, you know, gets a chance to kind of talk about it. I, I just wanted to point out too that, I'm sorry for my laptop. Sorry, I went to report science on this PDF. I'm well back looking at the, the monitor first report again. Just to, just to remind everybody that nineteen-twenty, which is the year we're looking at right? He reports a hundred and thirty-nine births for a hundred and seventy-one kids registered. That means that somewhere between birth five years ago and now, the town has gained thirty more kindergarten-age students for next year. His projection was a hundred and forty-nine students. So he projected more students than births. We're blowing that around. He also projects, which is interesting, I've never looked at this before. He projects every year about twenty-five to thirty student increase from kindergarten to first grade. Do we see that in the league? Now that we have full day kindergarten, prior to full day kindergarten, I can see that jump. I'm surprised to see these jumps when you go from year to year going down.
We still see a little bit, not that much.
Not that much, okay.
There used to be at least twenty kids or more.
And two years ago, we saw that sixth grade register. That's what we're seeing is we're seeing people register sixth grade. Which we had twenty-one students register two years ago. So now the class size is two-hundred-and-twenty-one. And they left our Denville fifth grade, which is two-hundred. We've registered at, and we're seventh grade now. But they're in a class of two-hundred-and-twenty-one. We, we were surprised by that. As a whole, that's a good section.
The other thing to look at, just so you know too, is the births. From births that would be anticipated in kindergarten next year is a hundred and thirty-nine, like I said. The next two years is a hundred and fifty-six. According to births, it's about a fifteen student increase. Hard to say whether that directly correlates but certainly is a benchmark that we can look at and say there's more births of people who previously lived in Denville. Do we ask, the final thing I was going to ask was, do we, in the registration process, I know you said we've seen a lot of first child in the family. Do we ask if they currently have other children?
I only asked for school age but I think next year it is a good idea to add that as a question. There are ones that are not school age because I've only asked for other school age siblings. I did not ask that.
They could have.
The last two years, we've done the flex over two years and I did not ask that either. But we certainly could.
You're going to catch a big majority where you can know coming up, you might go pick up, you got new families coming in and then how many kids do they have?
I think it's a piece of data because, you know, it's set up. Right now, the only data I'm guessing, I'm referring that I have fifty percent. Because before we only had thirty percent. And I was like, whoa, fifty, that's interesting. And then next year, fifty again. But I'm referring what that means. They're not only children and they're not, and fifty percent are only children. And they're born, they're not significantly whether their siblings are in high school or college. Some I'm sure are but only not fifty.
Yes, from the neighborhood, it's very old.
Yeah.
It's very much, you're seeing a lot, you're seeing a lot of older couples moving out, a lot of young couples moving in.
Those are the stories of hope.
Maybe it will save this in the, in the nation?
Yeah, as I was saying, it doesn't, it doesn't help our population grow when you got safe and really, really good schools in the top level way.
And now we're in a city.
Great, I am tenured.
Oh, that's for some of them.
Oh, yeah.
There are also the, there are also the key is counting, you don't understand, we don't know that. So I'm sure that factors in somewhere. The other thing, just something to account is obviously some of the event, like a practice could possibly close in the town. That would obviously affect our.
Yeah, a lot of, a lot of good parts but thank you to Dr. Collins and the Barris and Steve for keeping a close eye on me. Because I think that one thing that I can say as a board is I'm really proud of, we're very proactive with figuring stuff out. This process, when we really dug into it, just for Katie and James, we've talked a lot about, okay, what ifs? And if we say we have to build, even an addition, not a new building, but an addition on one of our current buildings, that is a two-plus year project. And I say two. And I say two, I'm being very conservative by saying two. I mean, we said today right now, like, the beginning of building open within two years is extremely difficult. And that's without going to referendum, that's just planning, building permits, all that stuff. I mean, it's, it's probably more three or four years if you really, really think about trying to do it the right way, so. Not that we're planning that, but just saying, for what-if perspective, there's a lot of things.
Um, have we considered redoing the demography report or having that revision?
So this one, we redid it a couple of years.
We did, and we had it amended?
Yeah.
Okay, based on the?
May two thousand seventeen.
Okay. On a little, you know, we did not do it based on new, like, just so it's how they, it's a bit of town. You know, like, there's more, you know, kids or something.
And so what I would say is, I'm, I'm not sure, this is the second, second demography report we've done since I was on board, and we had one previously. And everyone isn't exactly accurate, and I would say within twenty percent they're not accurate. So I'm not sure if doing another one is necessarily a helpless. Um, I think it was helpful to last what we did because it gave us an idea for some of the projections on developments that are being proposed. And so if there was a bunch of new developments that were proposed, I could get on the board with saying, hey, let's look at this to see what, though, I think we've got the, like, the kind of calculation now. We can probably get an idea, figure it out, like, just looking at it. I don't know, I mean, we certainly could, I mean, it'd be interesting to see if we can pull, how we can pull births without paying somebody a whole bunch of money to do it. I don't know, if they got to be able to do it that. Yeah. Go right into it.
No, that's, it's town. Town, town. Is it Dr. Collins or your, uh, should you give your version?
Yeah.
See, but I think the births are only part of the story.
They are.
The other part of the story is the house sales, because they have to turn off a roof. I think in the deadfall, that's true, it's gonna jump a lot.
I agree, I just don't know, I don't know if that would take into account with this demography report, I don't think it was.
Sounds like it could.
I don't think so. He could have judged the market, the market, I mean, right, there's so many areas there.
But certainly something we could discuss, I would say, you know, I, I would say, let's just keep it on the mind of, I believe, B and G operations. Just, it's probably gonna fall into that realm. All right, thank you, Dr. Collins. Demarest, this is Mr.. All right, it is eight twenty-three PM, we're gonna look for our first open comment section. Any comments, they can talk to the microphones, leave their name and add us for the record. Seeing no one come up, I'm gonna close our first open comment section at eight twenty-three PM. We're gonna move on to our agenda. We're just gonna move into old business, no action taken.
Sure, so next meeting we will be voting on, um, the educational course listed. Um, we're assuming all the medical offices report a number of hit cases and comprehensive equity plan for the years listed. We'll also be voting on minutes, front work sessions, and executive session on the eleventh as well as March twenty-fifth.
Second, voting ultimately. Any questions on education reports and this? Seeing no, let's move on to new business, actions to be taken, personnel, or issues.
I would like to move items one through five as a block if there are no objections. Uh, item one includes retirements, bus aids, uh, fraud rate for testing, uh, academy, success academy tours, some people can't success academy tour. Uh, and I'd also like to call your attention to items H and I on the addendum, uh, which is further retirements. Uh, let's see here, now item two, substitutes. Item three is an illegal act, uh, as is item four, and item five.
Thank you, this is right.
Uh, so item five is also on the addendum.
Any questions? We do have three staff members that are retiring. This is the Phillips.
Mrs. Royce.
Royce. This is Jean, and this is Plank. I wish that was a best of retirement. Questions, Collins? Seeing, uh, roll call please.
Mr. Capell?
Yes.
Mr. Cass?
Yes.
Mr. Lor?
Yes.
Mr. Penn?
Yes.
Mrs. White?
Yes.
Mrs. Cool?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Capell, do you want to raise your hand up for a report?
Certainly, if there are projections under destruction program, I'd like to move item number one, uh, which represents a teacher from Morris Catholic, uh, attending a National Association of Social Workers conference. I believe these are the title two funds that we administer for them?
Correct.
Second. And just to clarify for the public, two funds that we administer for Morris Catholic as well as other private schools in town means it's not our money, we are just the bank. But we have to approve it. Questions? Seeing, now roll call please.
Mr. Capell?
Yes.
Mr. Cass?
Yes.
Mr. Lor?
Yes.
Mr. Penn?
Yes.
Mrs. Weimer?
Yes.
Mrs. Cool?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Lor, back to you for new business under personal, no action taken.
Uh, the next meeting we will be voting on a two, a minimum of two items. Uh, one of which is catching in vacation days, another one which is, uh, moving across the guide and a leave of absence.
Any, uh, questions? All right, Mr. Capell, no action taken, construction.
For our next meeting, I will be moving items one, two, and three. This field trip request, uh, workshop expenses of which now there are listed. And then three, uh, we're gonna be approving the client survey. Um, we are reviewing that in IEP, what you're saying, you want the finance survey?
Yes.
Okay, so if anyone has any questions or comments on that, I don't see if it, we're, we're told, if anybody has comments or questions you want us to discuss, if you'd like to send them to me, I'll agree.
Could I ask, why would this be for?
I, because we have, the board policy requires that all, all surveys that go outside. I mean, we, I can survey, I can survey teachers without asking, but it goes outside to the, uh, the district, like, to, uh, say. Annual students.
Is there a specific goal in mind?
This is just something you have to do every couple of years for, uh, for the paid type of annual.
Okay.
So this is part of our, this is part of our protocols for that.
Thank you.
And we do it with the United Way and, um, Saint Elizabeth, what's the church? Saint Elizabeth's District, uh, University, Saint Elizabeth's Church. The one, the one compensation.
Any other questions on structure program, Ricky? Uh, there are no policies, is that, is that correct?
Yes. That's second.
All right, Mr. Cass, no action to be taken, finance.
At the next meeting, I'm moving for approval, a check, a little fund, three thousand six hundred and thirty dollars. In the sense, possibly other church might adhere for the next meeting. Uh, we also want to approve, uh, this party, um, the taxless providers, I guess they're not moving drops, any taxless?
Yeah.
I think, I think you're watching, uh, discarded. And, uh, we also have a, uh, a number of budget items to approve at the, the next meeting, um, we have a general fund, three three thousand, three three million, one hundred and sixty-six thousand, four hundred and forty-eight dollars. Special revenue fund, three hundred and eighty-six thousand, two hundred and eighty-four dollars, for a total of thirty-three million, one hundred and fifty-two, one hundred and thirty-two dollars. And we'll also, uh, want to approve raising taxes with general funds at thirty-one million, one hundred and sixty-eight thousand, one hundred and eighty-five dollars for the upcoming school year, two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty. And, uh, we also approve travel expenses related similar within the scope of permanent responsibilities of school staff and board members. Um, we will also, uh, want to, uh, establish a rate of this business travel only, an annual school year threshold of one hundred and fifty dollars per event. Where prior board codes, not be required to spend the threshold for staff member to succeed through eight to the ninth or to the third. And we also have to establish a maximum dollar of the travel expenditures as defined in New Jersey AC six A, twenty-three A, X seven, not one. And then we also have a resolution to establish a maximum travel expenditure of thirty-seven thousand dollars for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty school year. And the maximum for the two thousand eighteen, two thousand school year is thirty-seven thousand dollars, which thirty-six thousand, one hundred and ninety-three dollars has been spent, and twenty thousand, eight hundred and seven dollars is covered today. And we also have, uh, an approval for professional services, according to the New Jersey regulations, thirty-one thousand dollars for water, attorney fees at eighty-five thousand dollars, and architect fees of five thousand dollars.
Can I clarify, the travel, uh, resolution, the content we rise on last paragraph, the sixty-six thousand dollars, to include the eighteen, nineteen, thirty-year appropriation amount, as well as the spend and the control amount? And while we go, for, 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 I'm sorry, I'm asking. In the old resolution that we approved, uh, in March, early March, the encumbrance of the carpe near eighteen, nineteen, was not included. The county had suggested, um, that to invite that little portion.
Okay, I just, I just, uh, fifty-seven thousand is the travel plus the, or, it's the district-wide, uh, not just that account? That account is workshops as well, it's not just travel. It's not just lectures, it's workshops. And, and the title of the count is travel, but it's travel and the actual workshops, so certainly, yeah, spending thirty-six thousand miles, that.
Is the, is, is the district-wide, uh, workshop and, right, person, not counting in-house workshops, right?
Can I ask a question?
Sure, please.
Uh, last item was about the maximum annual expenditure for professional services. Um, can you explain that, how that works, because, um, I was wondering, you know, time for attorney fees to higher than that, or?
Now, absolutely, the county also, uh, suggests that every funded facility needs to include a, um, those professional services. Uh, insurance has had professional services for the past, that's quite a amount here, but these are the main professional services that the district use, uh, for the basis.
Does that come with a pre-approved amount? And that, above that, then you would have, you would come through us?
Yes, I did, I did it pre-approved.
Okay. But doesn't mean I have to know the maximum expenditure?
Like, for example, if you, when we do, say we do the value of feelings, like, value of feeling, engineering fees are thirty thousand dollars, so you'll have a board resolution to approve that.
Right.
It makes sense.
I don't find them so.
Five thousand. That five thousand is like a recommended number that they give us, but.
For general.
As an, like, I think, I think one time I may have asked an engineer to give us, like, a, a study on our, on those trailers to see if they were worthwhile, keeping or discarding. And it was like three thousand dollars, we just did that.
No, I understand, thanks for my.
What's the guidance fees are by common projects?
Yeah.
As the requirements.
No, that's fine.
And the attorney fees are, that's a lot of, like, phone calls and meetings that are little chunks.
Same or false?
Same or false?
Yeah, yeah. Well, a lot of review of contracts and stuff like that, then.
Negotiations.
Yeah, yeah.
Just so I can understand the process better, on March eleventh, we approved the preliminary budget to be presented to the county.
Correct.
And they in turn has, have approved our budget, and now we are going to vote on the finalized budget?
That is correct.
During our next meeting?
Okay. There's a law, we have to have, there's a, there's a timeframe, as we both have that. Preliminary budget, we're gonna do this timeframe, which we did, and you got that, the, the, here, all the here-end budget has to be that timeframe. So that's why you have two things at the time if you have.
And you need to submit to the county by certain dates.
Thank you.
After that, we would, if we look anything back and say, hey, you'd like this little portion for the filing.
And we've got like forty-eight hours, and then after approval, we put it on the list, and those, monitoring the laws.
Yeah. Thank you. I'm, uh, sad to see the Panasonic Laser Disc player of nineteen ninety-four being discarded.
Really?
Like, donate that to a museum or something? Can I erase this one?
It didn't take off?
No. You know, the boxy, you know, it's very.
Yeah.
You can say that it was so fuzzy, no, it's not extreme. Any other questions with budgets? Uh, nothing in operations and transportation, correct? We would want to build cause along with any reports corresponded, discussion, and others given.
I attended my first Pride meeting on March twenty-sixth, and some updates that, uh, I would like to share with board. There is the Pride Scholarship that they are offering manually, I'm not sure of the details, I'm still waiting on email response, when it's done, you know, some of those details for the scholarship.
No, other than I, I see a lot of the, uh, Morris Falls High School, they do the scholarship awards up there. I don't really, Pride purity is just a, a bar.
Once I have that information, I'll pass it along, but they did comment that no valley youth students have a lot. So I don't know if there's a channel or a way to, uh, communicate that.
Is there a scholarship for kids going to high school or college?
Uh, I'm still.
Usually it's for the one on college, so the kids would be adults now.
Yeah, I'll look into that, there, there, it's on the, I, I don't remember this during the meeting, and, but they put that comment on there, so I'll, I'll, I'll find out some more information.
Well, most of the organizations, uh, send their scholarship, about half the patients, and guide by criteria to the Morris Falls High School, guide, guidance office, so.
And they, they have, uh, I don't, just hundreds of scholarships that, uh, is relevant for, sort of, quietly, just take a pan job, it's like a, like a three, four hour hike up there. Perhaps they meant.
So, so, yeah, you know, it's, well, yeah, they would be from Harvard, it's like, yeah.
Yeah. And, uh, they had their litter day, or rid litter day, last Saturday, April sixth. And finally, they're having a board's dinner on April twenty-seventh at St. Francis, and it'll be monitoring three volunteer of the year, volunteer three.
Any others to prove cause?
I don't, I don't know how good it is, probably not there yet. Um, there was some articles about family upgrade to the legis, the legislature in New Jersey, so it's, um, I think it's been approved by the, uh, by legislature and the government, which was all for, so it's an expansion of family to include, like, you get the rest of your neighbor, they get a sitter to say, oh, you take family, uh, help your neighbor out, or your uncle, so longer, you need a family, they expand, uh, they pay a grant for the. Um, of course, so, be mindful of this, um, it looks like it's gonna cost money, so I don't know if we've got any information of what, uh, the tax impact would be to, uh, our, our staff, um, as well as the district.
You mean how much is gonna, how much is gonna come out of?
Yeah, yeah, it's pockets. Yeah, yeah, that's what, and, and we, I know we may throw it into pensions, things like that, I don't think there's any financial obligation on our part, in the, in the farm, but obviously, it would be for the employees, the individuals, the administrators, so.